All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Kitsap Regional Library Board of Trustees Meeting for June 24, 2025. I am President Eric Fong. With me, we've got a full house. Vice President Gina Steiner, Marwan Cameron, Eric Sisney, and Monica Blackwood. We'll go to Agenda Item 2, the Kitsap Regional Library Mission Statement. Marwan?
Inspiring curiosity and connection.
Thank you, Marwan. And we'll hand it to Jason for welcome and introductions.
Good evening. Welcome to our June meeting. And we have a foolish house. We have from leadership team, Executive Assistant Tammy Jeffries. And joining her is our phenomenal intern in admin, serving both the director's office as well as the foundation, Vanessa Bolio. Welcome, Vanessa. And supporting, she supports both the foundation and director's office, and it's been lovely to have her work with us thus far. Next, we have Deputy Director of Public Services Shannon Peterson. We have the Executive Director of the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation, Wendy Kyle. And we have the Director of Strategy and Communications, Jeannie Allen. And last, but certainly not least, the Director of IT and Facilities Management, Mike Rose. We have a number of special guests out in the audience, and it's Club North, Kingston, Little Boston Crew. North Kitsap Branch Manager, Regional Manager Leanne Winter out, along with our exciting Puzzle Club members, Jeannie DeNoyer, and we have Melissa Rogers. And last but not least, New Youth Services Librarian, who is joining us first week in the house, we want to welcome Natalie McLeagan? McLeagan, thank you, Natalie. And we want to welcome her to the Carroll family, and thank you for taking part in your first board meeting. And we have a couple patrons in the audience that are supportive of Puzzle Club, and so I don't know your names, but welcome, and other guests, so welcome. And that is it.
Thanks, Jason. We do have one item for public comment submitted for the record. It is in the agenda 5.01. For anybody viewing, you can read the comments on the KRL website. That's 5.01 from Matthew Macklin, comments regarding remarks addressing system-wide governance and compliance best practices. We will go to Agenda Item 6, the Consent Agenda. All matters listed within the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion of the Board of Trustees with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, items may be removed from the Consent Agenda and placed on the regular Agenda by request. In the Consent Agenda are 6.01, minutes from the May 27, 2025 regular board meeting, 6.02, payment of May 2025 expenditures, and 6.03, surplus library materials withdrawn from the collection for May 2025. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? Is there a second?
A second.
Monica? Discuss. Monica? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. And with that, we will go to Presentation 7.01, Mission Moment, the North Kitsap Puzzle Club, with Jeannie, Melissa, and gang. The floor is yours. Thank you for being here today.
Are we good? Okay. So as you already heard, I'm Melissa Rogers, and this is?
I'm Jeannie DeNoyer.
And we're here from Puzzle Club. So the way Puzzle Club got started is Thursday afternoons at Little Boston were exceptionally quiet, and I really, or we really wanted a way to bring more patrons in the library, so Leanne suggested that we come up with a program. We were trying to think of something different, and you know, that wasn't already offered another branch, and you know, Jeannie had recently become interested in jigsaw puzzles, and that was, we kind of looked at each other and said, well, why not puzzles? So you want to tell how you became interested?
Yeah, sure. I first became interested in jigsaw puzzles. I went to the Port Orchard Friends of the Library kiosk, and I found a puzzle I loved. I brought it home. My husband and I put it together, and we loved it. Three months later, I found myself on a 6:00 AM flight to San Diego. We went to a national jigsaw puzzle, speed puzzling competition. And we weren't competing. We were just there to enjoy the puzzling, and we were welcomed. It was such a fun community. There was so much going on, puzzling going on everywhere, in the restaurant, everything of this hotel. So I came back, and I was just gushing about this experience, saying, I had so much fun. And so obviously, it was top of mind when we were thinking of programming.
So Leanne told us to go for it and start planning. So the first thing we had to do was gather puzzles. We have, we are very lucky, between the two of us and you know, friends and neighbors, to gather, be donated puzzles quite often, so that was pretty easy. Jeannie got puzzle boards, nice big phone cord boards to do puzzles on, so that you can save them from week to week and move them from place to place as well. And then Jeannie and her husband made some boards that have felt on top for sorting, so that the puzzle pieces don't slide around. And then we just were, kind of tried to figure out what would, what would Puzzle Club look like? And the funny thing is, what we thought it would look like, and what it has turned into, are kind of different things, but that's the beauty of it, wouldn't you say?
Exactly, exactly.
So at first, we had one person, just one, and so Jeannie and I would sit in, take turns and sit in and keep her company, and we wondered if it was, you know, if you build it, they will come. And Leanne said, be patient, it takes a while for things to get going. And within, I would say, a few months, we went to two, and then three, and now we are pretty regular at about five people, right?
Five or six. And I don't know if we have room for many more.
Right. Yes, Little Boston, six is about our max, but that's perfect. And most of the same people come every week, but there's a few that, you know, people travel or have other obligations, and so we have kind of a rotating group, but everybody knows each other pretty well at this point. Okay. So if you're wondering what it looks like, there's a couple pictures up there. So the first thing we do is, we have a big stack of these puzzle boards that I mentioned, that have all the same puzzles, so we very carefully get them from the bottom shelf under the adult fiction, and carry them into the program room, and spread them out into people's favorite places. People kind of choose to sit in the same spots every week. And then, oh yeah, Jeannie has a really great idea every week to do a question, and I want her to tell you why she came up with the survey questions.
Yeah, we do a question of the day kind of survey, just sort of to spark some conversation. It's always about puzzling, and I don't know how we've managed so far, because this is one year now into it, we've managed to come up with 52 interesting questions about puzzling. So the one example on the, on the screen is, what is your favorite time of data puzzle? So folks write their name on a puzzle piece and just stick it on the board to, you know, put in their answer. And then we save the puzzle pieces, and once a month, we draw a name, and they get to choose one of the donated puzzles to take home. So it kind of, we learn each other's names this way, we kind of have a place of conversation to start a conversation, as well as a reward for coming back. So it's worked out real well.
So, and then our, we talked a lot, you know, when we were putting together this presentation, and this is really what we do. We lay everything out, we provide the space, and then we just stand back and watch now. Nobody really needs us in the room, they all have each other. We still get to go in sometimes, and we have to go in and talk and see how things are going, but yeah, we stand back and watch the magic happen. And it's the coolest thing, that we went from one person to this amazing group of people that get together every week.
Yeah, there's no room for us anymore, so.
So if you see up there, one of our regulars, Lou, was, played Father Christmas at, was it the Genealogical Lunch, I think, in Bremerton? And he came to Puzzle Club in his full regalia there. And we also, we know him as Lighthouse Lou. He did a tour for the North Kitsap Branches at Staff Day last October. And then, yeah, now he's an integral part of Puzzle Club, for sure. So yeah, we did have a couple little girls come last summer with their mom, but mostly it's adults who either don't, don't have the time or the space, you know, at home to puzzle. One of our regulars, Milo, has this incredibly complicated puzzle that I think he said his wife was like, you need to finish this or put it away. And so he brought it, and he does, it's the most complicated, you know, there's a picture of it somewhere, but you know, he does a dozen or so pieces a week. He's got, I think his record is like 27 now, but we provide that space, we store it for him every week, and so he can come and work on it, and it doesn't, you know, get in his wife's way, because we don't want that. And then, oh yeah, well, and up there, Jeannie wrote some, you know, for us, the social interaction has been the most important and most fun thing, but puzzles are good for your brain, they're, you know, they're good for stress relief. Definitely. So the other cool thing, we had no idea when we started this with our one participant, that it would spread to half of the other libraries in the system. We did a puzzle swap, and then Paulsbo followed suit, and Sylvan Way, and Silverdale, and Paulsbo has also started doing puzzle races and swaps. Paulsbo and Little Boston and Kingston all have ongoing puzzle swaps somewhere in the branch for people to come anytime. And we also had an amazing presentation with Lou, who came and talked about his vintage puzzles. He's going to do another presentation in the fall. But yeah, our one, our little club has spread the love of jigsaw puzzling all from north to south now. And that's, yeah. Do you have any questions for us?
What is the largest puzzle that you have?
There. We, a thousand pieces, I think, but that's, it's a good question. We have found that 300 is kind of the sweet spot, 300 pieces, because people can do that in a couple of sessions, so they don't, you know, it's, you get that sense of accomplishment a little sooner, but yeah, we have, there's a couple people that do 1,000 piecers that take a little bit longer, but yeah, 300 to 500 is our average, I would say. We don't have room for much more. The puzzle boards hold about, they're two, or no, 20 inches by three feet?
20 by 30.
20 by 30, yeah. So they, they can't hold, we don't have space to store the larger puzzles, so yeah, the smaller ones work a little better.
And we're just super grateful for all the participants who come and are part of, we wouldn't have a Puzzle Club if it weren't for the people who came. So we're very grateful, and for our colleagues, for Leanne for saying yes. It's just been wonderful.
It's wild how fast Thursdays go by now, because they were so slow and so quiet, and now we can't believe all of a sudden it's like time to clean up and go.
So I have one more question. Are you guys looking to send anybody down to this conference or competition, like on behalf of our Puzzle Club?
That is a great idea. We can start practicing right now.
Yeah, we can work, we can work on sponsorships, I guess, yes.
I'm going to jump in really quick. We didn't share this in the introduction, but these two won our Team Staff Day Award this year. And it was just so beautiful in that award, and from what I, the conversations I've had with Leanne and in the branch. It's all about Puzzle Club and love of puzzles, but really, what I've been so inspired by and struck by is the connections that they're making, the relationships that they're building, and just the intentionality behind that, like talking to Jeannie about how she sets up the room, and how she, you know, asks the questions to kind of build that connective tissue between the group. It's, it's just such a lovely thing. And so congratulations to you two for that award and for the work that you're doing.
I realize there's, when you talk about connections, we're literally putting, piecing together a puzzle at the same time as we're piecing together a community. And I just find that really heartwarming.
There, yeah. One of our, our most favorite puzzle patrons, his daughter came when he did the presentation at Kingston, and she, she pulled me aside and thanked me, because she, she said that this, his wife, her mom died a year ago, and she was worried about him, and she said that this is really pulled him back out, and like, he looks forward to going, and we look forward to having him, but she said, you know, it's really saved him.
Thank you.
A couple things. I just wanted to jump in and echo what Shannon said about your embodiment of our mission throughout this process. A lot, a great deal of respect and admiration for you, just because it isn't easy to do something like this. It looks fun, but going through the process of setting up an original program, the discouragement you get, and I'm talking from a place of experience, because I had this experience programming, trying to do my first storytime. And I think just embodying this idea of perseverance, and I know that that's something that means a lot to both of you, I just really want to applaud you for really living our mission, breathing our mission, and taking something as simple as a puzzle and creating, you know, a magical tapestry of connections with our patrons. I see that there were people on the screen who matched people in the audience, and I was putting the pieces together, pun intended, by the way. And I just want to thank you for showing up to all of our friends, we call our patrons friends. Thank you for supporting this program. Thank you for supporting, it means a lot to us for basic connections, and through the vehicle of putting puzzles together, there's a lot that can be garnered in terms of, you know, the social fabric of our communities that we want to be strengthened by our libraries. So for Jeannie, Melissa, for Leanne providing the opportunities, for Shannon always saying yes, and for always developing really a space for people to thrive and create without any pressure. It means a lot to me as a leader, and to all of us as leaders, and it really is the embodiment of what we set out to do when we changed our mission. And thank you for doing that. I just want to say thank you.
Love it. Thank you very much. If nothing else, we will go to Agenda Item 7.02, Board Member Updates. I only have, I only have one, and I'll go really quickly. I had the pleasure of attending the and volunteering at the Manchester Salmon Bake again. I was back on garlic bread duty. I guess I did so, so well a couple of years ago, they just put me right back on, but very much enjoy seeing the Manchester community. There were some folks who lived in the area and had never been to it before, and their neighbors told them you should go, and they finally went, and they loved it. So it was great. It was a, it was a beautiful day. I saw Jason pretending to know how to make salmon. I'm teasing. No, it was great.
I did the salmon. Every year now.
He did. Jason, Jason is a, Jason knows how to cook. So, yeah, that's my thing.
I volunteered there too. I was involved in planning and setup and take down and everything, and I heard that we made enough money that I think it's going to be a success, and we'll go ahead next year. So never quite sure of that, but this year, I think we'll, it was really successful. Like you say, good weather, everybody was happy, I didn't hear any complaints, and so anyway, thank you for both volunteering and participating, and I think we all had a lot of fun.
And here are the updates. Yeah, go ahead, Marwan.
Of course, we had Juneteenth, which is very awesome, and the library always participates, so it was very special this year. And not only did the 22nd, 23rd Annual Juneteenth take place at Evergreen, but also the first annual with, who's a big friend of the library, does a lot of different things. So it's just good to see all these different programs happening in the community. Additionally, I love coming to the board meetings and having different departments come and just share all the different things that the library does, and things that one individual can think of. My daughter and I love puzzles. I meant to ask, are there any tips that you have on how to put together puzzles? Because I'm terrible at it. But also, last Tuesday at the Silverdale Library, the county had a substance abuse prevention and youth services department came out and had the DEI manager, Kimberly Williams, come out and speak about DEI, and really kind of drill down on what DEI is. And she told a very personal story about her disability, and just talked about accessibility and veterans, and, and just the different ways that people don't really recognize DEI. And so it was really an important place to be, and that took place in the library, so that was really special, and a lot of different organizations out. So, you know, again, just watching how the library system can support all of these, all this different information and services to help the community is just really powerful. So love being a part of that.
And I just have one question. What time on Thursday afternoons do you guys usually start?
Two to four.
Two to four? I'm going to try to pop in, thank you for that. And then I guess my only update is, I attended the Friends and Donors Lunch with the foundation and the library at Harrenwood, and we got to hear guest speaker Kathy Dewitt? Dewitt. She's an author of two books about wildlife, birds and ocean life, and she was just fabulous. I loved it, and I was really sorry that I had to leave early, but that was a big success, so thank you for putting that on.
And likewise, I got to attend that luncheon. It was a lot of fun, great to connect with so many community members and members of the library system that I haven't met yet. So that was a lot of fun. Sat with Gina, and we chatted as well. And the speaker, you know, growing up in the house my mom grew up in, in Indianola, I felt like I already knew pretty much everything there was to know about the beach out there. And I did pick up one or two things, which was pretty fun. I'm like, oh, that's the name of that thing that I thought was called this. So anyway, a lot of fun. Loved the way that the speaker used a lot of kid humor to entertain all of us and get their, and get the educational messages across. So thank you for having that.
Great. Thank you for the updates. We'll go to 7.03, Gina and Marwan, for the Long Range Strategic Planning Committee Report.
Yeah, I'll give a quick rundown. We got an update and learned that we are close to completing an agreement with the Central Kitsap School District Partnership. And as far as the Port Orchard, we plan on, things are moving along, and we think we'll be established there within five years. For our personnel update, we will be looking to recruit a new HR person by the end of summer. And for operations, we're continuing to balance the availability of free printing for patrons without making sure the expense isn't too excessive. And for the levy lift update, or the levy lid lift update, we've had three community forums in person, two virtual ones, and the voters' guide will be mailed out on July 11th, and the ballots will be mailed out July 18th. And of course, the vote is on August 5th. And we can expect to see some policies specifically developed around patron code of conduct and some more procedures on that. So I think that was it for our update. Did I miss anything, Marwan? Okay, great. Thank you.
Sounds great. You covered a lot. We'll go to 7.04, Financial Report. Jason, in Dan's absence, is there anything to add beyond the report that's been filed?
Yeah, thank you. So reporting for CFO Dan Baer, who is out and excused. So at the end of May, we're tracking closely to our overall budget. Year-to-date expenditures are at about 42%, which is just slightly above the 41% elapsed portion for the year, indicating that we're generally on track. Salaries and benefits, which as you know, make up the majority of our budget, are tracking right at about 41%. And non-personnel and capital expenditures are slightly higher, 44% and 43% respectively. And other news with regard to finances. In summary, we're, five months into the year, our financial performance remains sound, with us being, with revenues being just slightly ahead of projections, the expenditures well-aligned to our trajectory for the year. So we're right on target in terms of finances, as Mr. Baer would like to say, we're tight and on target. So that is my financial report on behalf of our CFO, Dan Baer.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for Jason? Okay. With that, Jason, we'll go right back to you for 7.05, the Library Director's Report.
Thank you. I'm pleased to share highlights from this month's report, beginning with our strategic focus for May, which our talented Director of Strategy and Communications puts out every month for folks to continue the learning and continue the growth with our strategic plan. And in May, it was all about STEM learning, one of my favorite topics. So our staff have continued to show how science, technology, engineering, I like to say STEAM too, the art is important, and math are deeply like interwoven into all of our library work. And that's important, because, you know, from guiding older adults through digital tools to offering robotic STEM storytimes, you know, climate-focused community conversations in our branches, our services are not just educational, of course, they're empowering for people. And we're positioning our library as a true engine for innovation. I love that. I love that we have, you know, a plethora of opportunities for workforce development, not only for youth, but you know, like having Vanessa in office, and I hate to put you on the spot, but it's, it's good to provide those opportunities that the library can provide opportunities for community members to build up those skillsets in order to, you know, be useful and whole in our community. We really feel like the library is a place for that. And so, you know, in terms of what we do along the STEM lines, I'm proud of our work in that space, and I'm proud to continue that work, and I'm glad we centered that work with our strategic plan. On the activities front, in May, I had the opportunity to join the annual Bainbridge Library Retreat. I attended with Shannon Peterson, the Suquamish Foundation Gala at Keanu Lodge, participated in final events for Abbott Mentoring, which, as you know, is a big part of keeping me grounded and connected to youth and the community as a former youth services librarian. I really feel like our jobs are to empower youth and provide opportunities. And so providing opportunities for youth is going to be really important for us. And then I spent the day at the end of the month working the floor at the Port Orchard Branch, which has really become, you know, one of the parts of my job that I really enjoy, working alongside staff once a month at their locations. I'll be there soon. I've developed some friends at Kingston amongst patrons, and so we have a running joke that my fans are waiting at Kingston. So I've developed, just because they haven't seen me, and I think I might be the only male who they've seen working in that place. And so it's always funny when I go to Kingston and staff are like, or patrons are like, who is that? Is he new? And I always tell them I'm training for the day, and so. But no, it's been good to be in that space, and I'm looking forward to attending more, what I call just workdays for the library director. And so, and also continued engagement with different leaders in the county and peers, including a couple of planning sessions for the ongoing process of determining the eventual replacement of our central library hub, Sylvan Way. There's always something happening with that facility, and we know it's a long-term goal, so the meetings continue with a planning group to figure out what is a sustainable plan that doesn't involve a heavy lift from our community, from taxpayers, to be able to replace that building. And then I attended a, oh, and then of course, last month, we cannot not mention on May 9th, our 80-year anniversary party in May, that was well-attended. And we talked about it a little bit in the board meeting, but just reflecting on all of May's activities, I really wanted to highlight what a, really a coronation of 80 years all wrapped up into one event. And although it can't at all replicate what 80 years of library services have been like, we'll have more opportunities to showcase what that looks like along the way this year. Obviously, we're busy with levy stuff, but we have an opportunity later in the summer to- to showcase part of our 80-year history with the Kids App History Museum. So I'm proud that our Director of Strategy and Communications, along with their department, is working on an installation for that, so that community members can see really what the value has been for the library over the course of 80 years, and really even longer, we know, and how library services have really changed over the years. And, and so it was a momentous occasion. And really, really, I want to thank our Deputy Director of Public Services, Shannon Peterson, and our Silverdale manager, especially Anna Kubrick-Moss, for really laying out a nice party. I think we know how to throw a party. And for, I think we had a couple board members attend, Eric Fong and maybe Eric Sizney? No, one Eric was there. And so thank you for attending, and a plethora of community members who came out and showed up. And it was a wonderful occasion. And then on the operations side, just a bit of stats from May. Circulation remains up 3.5% from May, and that's, we think, driven by a 10% increase in, in digital circulation. In terms of program attendance, offsite program attendance saw a 32% increase year over year. And obviously, always due to outreach efforts, public services team hits the ground running hard and really has interwoven their community contacts or really just embedded within everything they do. And so really want to shout out our staff who make it happen and who get out into the community. And all the branch managers take turns with the larger events coordinating them. And so it's been good to see. And other news. And then lastly, we did see, we saw a couple dips in like onsite attendance, but that's always, and new card registrations month over month. But overall, our trends remain strong over the course, tracking May of last year to this year. And so I think, you know, because of the efforts of the 80-year anniversary, it's summer, so obviously with not, with weather being a little more calm in terms of not a lot of rain, people are getting out more and taking part into library programs and library services. And lastly, in, in May, leadership conducted its third quarter retreat focusing on alignment. And the retreat really provided us opportunity to discuss and deepen our collective, our understanding of our collective and what we are set out to do for the library system. So just really just kind of reestablishing our purpose, what we're here for, where we're here to support all staff to really be able to carry out our mission, vision, and values. That's our main purpose, obviously. But, you know, from time to time, it's important for us to take a step back to reaffirm our purpose. And we had an opportunity to do that for a whole day, and I thought we had good conversations and development. And development, as I've stated, is, we're a learning organization, which means as leaders, we're not exempt from learning. Quite the contrary, we need to set the stage for learning. And so there'll be more opportunities for this team to learn and grow together. And so I'm happy with where our team is. And then finally, we talked about it in Gina's report, but the library is all in on supporting the levy. So Shannon, myself, and Jeannie as part of the levy steering team have been hitting the community forums and educating the populace about what our levy is all about and giving our populace a historical view of what the levy is for the library, our past history, why we need to do it, and how our services really propped up this community. So it's been a really good process. I think for me, the first time, like being in that type of space and talking about the library from an aspect, I learned a lot from Jeannie and Shannon through this process. And I really want to lift them both up for their leadership in this space. I would not have been able to, I think, be effective without their training and leadership and helping me to be prepared for that space. And so I really want to put them on public, you know, blast here for their work and their expertise, because they've done it before, but I haven't. And so I think the organization's off to a good start, educating the populace, and looking forward to Ballot Day, August 5th. And that's it. Are there any questions? And I want to thank the board for their continued support of the library and their continued advocacy in supporting library events and talking about the power that is the public library. And that's it. Any questions? I'm happy to take questions from the board.
No questions, but thanks for the update. And it sounds like you've been having fun with your dashboards. Got some stats in there.
I do. I love my dashboards. And yes, that is a toy that I love playing with.
And I also, I also love the, you know, the presentations that we have here every month that, that kind of leadership and reminding us of why we're all here can come from, it doesn't need to come from the top down. It comes from the bottom up as well. It comes from ideas from branches, and it doesn't have to come from one spot. It comes from everybody being aligned and, you know, wanting the same thing. So I think that that's great. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you for the update, Jason. And we will go to Agenda Item 10, Housekeeping. Our next meeting for the KRL Board is Tuesday, July 22nd. We'll also have our Finance Committee meeting. And with that, we are adjourned. Have a good evening.